In our forecast portfolio. When we exit the contract and then there's a whole bunch of steps between now and then if and when it depends upon what the Palmer owners do with the applications, et cetera. But one of the things that we have been working on over the past several months is what I'll call basically an exit ramp for the RMLD to exit. There are some, so we are positioned to do that, but right now we are waiting what will continue to happen relative to Palmer owners and managers of that facility in terms of what they're going to do next. So we are poised, but we haven't taken any additional action or any final action until that's that's finalized. So we're, and the other thing that you'll see in a few moments on both last month and this month, we are backfilling and preparing to backfill that power. Obviously, we need to continue to fill our portfolio. So you'll see some additional request for additional opportunities in this particular case in the hydro save stuff. So those are, those are two pieces of the answer to that question.
Do you know, do you know when that, I mean, you, you mentioned that, of course, that the, the, the March, what 2023 data is, do you, do you have any idea when you make, when you are going to pull the trigger on this thing and, and, and exit?
So it, it, um, so it depends heavily on what the Palmer entity does. Because depending upon what they do, it will impact how we execute our plan. And so not knowing what they're doing exactly, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, that would be speculation at the most, but sometime between now, there's a key milestone in March of 2022. Hopefully things will be resolved well before then. And then there's a potential another milestone in March of 2023. But the plant doesn't exist at this point in time. So this is an economic discussion at this point in time. Does that help?
It does. It does. I just, I would encourage you to be as aggressive on this point as, as you can. Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and we have been, I may not seem that way to many people who've been following us, but we have been trying to be very aggressive and exploring all, all alternatives for doing this. I might just mention that the last thing in the world we want to do is breach an existing contract. Because that has major implications for everybody, not just reading, but everybody here. And so we've been very careful about that and staying within all the legal guidelines. And I think from what you've seen and from what we've all seen, the the potential is such that the plant will probably not be able to meet its contractual obligations. From at least from what we've seen and heard as well as what you've seen and heard. Thank you. You're welcome. Gail.
Thank you, John. Um, so I, I also asked a question in the cab and both Greg and, and Colleen did a great job answering it, but I did have one concern about the answer. And the point I was making was that in the customer survey, it was clear that customers are willing, a, a, a majority of your customers are willing to pay for rate increase to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And yet in the green, clean energy policy, it says that customers want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but without, but with little or no price increase. Colleen explained, I, I, and I was very helpful about how in the mission statement, it talks about keeping low costs and, and I get that. And she mentioned that, you know, there might be some changes because given the climate crisis and, and that, thank goodness, the mood in the country is becoming more proactive. We, you might be changing that policy, which is great, but I would just request that the clean energy policy be amended so that it isn't misstating where the source of keeping the prices low is it's not coming from the customers because the majority are asking for more. Are, are willing to pay more. It's really coming from your mission statement. So I'd be more comfortable if the wording was changed to say that, you know, we will however follow, um, you know, the, our mission statement at this point, which is to keep prices as low as possible. Or it doesn't say as low as possible, but it says to be low. That's just what I would put out there as my request because I'm uncomfortable with having a statement that does not accurately reflect what the customer said in the customer survey. That's all.
Thank you for that input. Do we, uh, any other comments from commissioners relative to this? Bob, you have your hand. Oh, your hand raised, Bob?
Yeah. Thank you, John. You know, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But I think our mission statement, you know, rates, reliability and revenue, you know, are extremely important to, to everybody. I, I know, yes, there is a subset of customers willing, willing to pay more. But, uh, you know, we could talk about numbers all day long. I, I'd be hesitant to say majority are willing to pay more. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think this survey showed is that there were different categories of how much people were willing to pay. And we're going to try to implement something that reflects that, that allows people to, uh, to pay in, in different categories. We haven't really formally talked about how to accomplish that yet. I think it's a really good idea. And so without turning it into an administrative nightmare from a IT perspective, certainly we want to do that. And the, the survey said 60% for 7%, I have it here in front of me. Would like RMLD to be aggressive with respect to setting goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I think we're on that path. I think we're really trying to react faster and go further than we're, what we're being mandated to do by the state. So we have that in mind. We've, you know, we ran the survey, uh, we heard the respondents. And so we have a couple of different goals to meet here. And we just have to kind of balance those out, but we understand where you're coming from, yeah. Well, if there are no other questions from the public, thank you very much. And we'll move on with the meeting. If you don't, there we go. Yeah, thank you. I would like if they're excellent. Thank you very much. Let's see, a report on the citizens advisory board meeting, Mr. Potato.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me start by making a comment here first on the public, from the public. I'm going to request that the, we review how we allow the rate payers to speak at these meetings. I, you know, I'm now starting my 35th year. It feels like I got here yesterday, to be honest with you. But, you know, I've always run with the idea of transparency and listening to the rate payers. And I'm a little bit uneasy with the policy that we have in place for the way we're allowing the rate pays to give us input. I just came from the citizens advisory board meeting where we had citizens in the middle of the meeting ask questions and brought up their, their ideas and they were, you know, as long as you're respectful, you know, that's the one thing I require, I will ask everybody to be respectful. I really do feel that we need to review how we're allowing the rate payer input going forward and coming started with the next meeting. It's, it's a question I'm going to make that we need, that we need to review that. Because I'm uncomfortable with the process we have now. We're just letting people in at the minute for 10 minutes. You know, I, we've never done that in the past in my 35 years. I've, I've gone through 12 elections. The one thing that I've stated in every single election, my first thing is transparency and listening to the rate payers. And I'm going to reemphasize that today completely that we should be doing that. We should be allowing people in during the meeting. And if they, they raise their hand and they have a question, as long as they're respectful, that's again, I request that we, they should be allowed to speak. I have my, I have my piece say.
Thank you, Phil. And I just want to make a comment back to you on that, on that topic. In general, I completely agree with you. When you get, unfortunately, when you get 20 to 30 people in a room and you, in a Zoom meeting, I mean, this works much, much better when we're all together in a room together. We can see people. When you have 30 people on board and our little boxes are that much smaller, it's very difficult to tell who's talking, who's raising their hand. And when people are making comments out of order, it's not a good thing. And so that was one of the reasons that I instituted it or suggested we do anyway, in the last couple of meetings. And the second is that the select board uses this exact process for that.
Board does. That's their business, you know, I, we should be setting our own rules, not, not following somebody else's rules.
Phil, that's absolutely fine. And you know, even the constitution has how many amendments, 29 now? So even the constitution was changed in 35 years. So, so it's, we're always looking for best practices and we can always discuss this and, you know, we can address this certainly in future meetings.
Okay, but I'm going to ask the leadership for the next meeting to review this item and decide what they want to do.
That's just fine. Absolutely. Let's see, I'd I'm still, sorry, Phil, but did you have finished the, um, the response from the advisory in the cab meeting?
Yeah. So basically, I don't want to steal any Greg's thunder tonight, so I won't steal any Greg's thunder coming.
Okay.
Didn't make an outstanding presentation on, on his area. So I look forward to that. Beyond that, we heard reports from Hameed. So I won't steal Hameed's thunder either on all the awards that he's won. And Wendy actually gave an outstanding presentation on the billing, on the receivable process, on the invoice process that she'll, I hope she'll be giving that again tonight. So, and that kind of sums it up again. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder.
Great. Thank you very much, Phil. Okay, I'd like to move on to item number four, approval of the board minutes. And before we do that, I'd like to thank Mr. Pacino for going through perhaps one of the longest minutes I think we've ever had, certainly in the time that I've been here. And looking over the, and reviewing the board minutes, it went on page after page after page, especially in tax season. So yeoman duty, Mr. Pacino, thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. I, basically the commissioners and the guests, I tried to cut, you know, take us a little bit out of what they had to say as I could. It was more just grammar in terms of, and what, in terms of what they were saying. And then obviously there were some errors that, you know, the, the left-hand margin didn't quite work right at times.
Okay. With that, could you read the suggested motion?
Yes, I will. Let's see, move that the board of commissioners approved the meeting minutes of January 20th, 2021, meeting on the recommendation general manager.
Have a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Coulter. A roll call vote, Mr. Stenbeck, I.
Mr. Pacino, I.
It's Talbot, I.
It's Coulter, I.
Excellent. Marlena, uh, could you raise your hand?
Yep, I.
Thank you very much.
Actually should probably abstain because she was not at the meeting, to be.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yes. Recommend that she abstain.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, very good.
But I'm sure they look good, right, Marlena?
Really good.
John, you should.
Yes.
Just hold her. Help Marlena with the little, like the protocol, like the roll call vote.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll get on to that or someone else may. What I'd like to do at this point in the meeting is if no one has an objection, I'd like to move item number 14, which is the election of the new chair and vice chair forward. And I'd like to make one change to the suggested motion. But first, does anyone have an objection for me moving it forward to this point?
That's fine.
I'm sorry, Dave?
That's fine. No.
Good. I want to change the suggested motion. I'd like to also suggest how we would proceed through the, the nomination. What I'd like to do is, once the floor is open for nomination, I'll write down the nomination of whoever would, would like to be nominated. And then I'll take a poll alphabetically of all the commissioners, uh, starting with Marlena, going to Bob, et cetera. Alphabetically by last name. And then, of course, whoever gets the majority vote wins and becomes the new commissioner. And I'd like to modify the the chair. I mean, I'd like to modify the, uh, the motion to be effective immediately, not at the end of the meeting. So that the new chair would be able to proceed with this particular meeting. If there's, is there any objection to that? If not, could I open the floor for nominations for the chair? I'd like to nominate Bob Coulter. Are there any other nominations?
I, I can second that nomination. Um, and, and just to, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I think, you know, we've had, we've had a, a, basically a rotation in the past, and I think that's a sensible thing to do. And it's sort of, you know, it's Bob and, and Phil are kind of due and overdue. The only tweak I would say, and it would apply to me as well, is that when we're heading into an election year, it may be good practice to think about not having the chair be seated at the election in case, you know, that, that's a practice in other, in other areas. So that would just influence how I would look at it, whether it was for me or anybody else. So that's all. So if we.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good, a good idea. As a matter of fact, the select board had Bob sort of run the process. Yeah. And that's fine. I'm not sure who would do it here. Maybe Colleen.
What do you mean run the process?
Well, in terms of, you know, doing the polling, I'm assuming that's what you were, you were talking about.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm just saying in general, we might think about that as being a board policy that, you know, so like in this case, it could be Bob Coulter is chair and Phil is vice chair, for examples, that's how this could work out. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And then, you know, you're, you're it now. I was it last year. So it's kind of like, you know, Marley is new. So it kind of makes sense, right? So.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it going, but.
Okay, I have, I've got no, no issue with that. And as a matter of fact, we probably should incorporate that into our, uh, our, our process or portfolio for, uh, for the, so, so that it just happens and we can actually call it out.
Yeah. And I don't know if I didn't mean to step on whatever the process.
That's okay. It's a good idea.
Nominating or polling or whatever, but anyway.
Well, we have one nomination for Bob Coulter. And if you could answer yes or no, when I call your name, I would appreciate it. Marlena?
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I say yes. Mr. Talbot?
I think I already said yes. It's Bob. Yeah. So.
Okay. So congratulations. We have a, a new chair. And you have the pleasant duty now of, uh, running the vice chair nomination.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Phil for the vice chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations for vice chair? If not, Marlena?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes, obviously.
Well, it's not. You could decline. I mean, you've done it 35 times.
I've always voted for myself. I don't think.
I say yes.
Absolutely no way. I can't tolerate this.
Okay. So we have a new chair and new vice chair. Thank you very much. I'm out of the hot seat now for the time being. And Bob, would you please carry on with our next item? I'll try to help along and.
I gotta get my glasses because.
Bob, can I just have one item? I will continue as the secretary, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
So, uh, we're on to item number five, the man and general managers report. So please feel free to conduct.
Okay.
Colleen, could you please present the general managers report?
Thank you and good evening. I'm going to give some updates before we get into the policies. We're going to be having a virtual EV workshop on April 27th. You don't have to memorize any of these. I'll have Joyce send them out, but April 27th at seven o'clock. I'm pleased to say we've already got 124 registrations. Uh, that was as of April 20th. And some of the community TV stations will be broadcasting this live, so we'll send that out. We were thinking of having in the same week, the high school awards thing. So I sent out all of the artwork from the high school and thank you for everyone for voting and everyone from staff voted. And we have some winners. We give first place gets a hundred dollars and they're on the cover of our annual report. I think you probably remember before I got here was a very fancy annual report. And now we're doing high school, we'll keep the cost down and, and the artwork, as you saw, is spectacular along with their narratives. So a hundred dollars for first prize, then 75, then 50, and then 25, and they spend that on art supplies and school supplies. We were thinking of the 29th, but Phil said that that was a town meeting, one of the town meeting nights. So I, I texted Joyce, I think we're going to set it for the first week of May. What I'm looking for is at least one commissioner to show up and maybe one cab member. I think that always makes the kids feel really good. Um, and we'll, we'll ask them to read their narratives, you know, very similar to how we've been doing the third grade electric education and, and poster contest. So I'll, we'll pick a date and send that out. Wendy's going to talk a little bit later. We're thinking that the audit committee, uh, we might be ready to schedule that in May, which means that the annual report will come out in June, but I'll let her talk about that. We're looking at possibly a battery walkthrough with some of our state delegates at our five megawatt battery facilities. You recall, we got a million dollar ACES grant. And the concept would be to talk to them about more potential battery grants in the future for smart grids and things like that. So we're looking forward to that coming up. The virtual electrification presentation is scheduled for June 7th. That's at 2:30. This is event is in partnership with the Wilmington Public Library to coincide with their earth year theme. The, let's see, the RMLD, as you know, has applied for EV grants from the state. We put in level three chargers as well as level two. The towns of Wilmington and Reading are both submitted. We're keeping our fingers crossed. We don't have any status back yet on those grant awards, but as soon as we hear, we will let you know how we made out. We're having a bike, as you know, we've had a bike event that is usually done by Reading Cares, but because our policy on facilities said, you know, that we changed says, okay, they have to have a liability waiver with the town board and committee, which means that any of the four towns that we service can all use some of the properties. And the bike event was sponsored by Reading Cares and because of the liability, it's now sponsored by the Reading Climate Action Committee with Reading Cares. And we were able to secure command incident approval and a COVID plan in order to let that go through this year. So we're really excited about that. That's April 30th is the drop off. May 1st is the, um, the actual, when the kids come in and they get to pick the bikes out. There's going to be, you know, masks and six foot distancing, all COVID plans authorized by Board of Health. And then it's also meeting our emergency operating procedures on infectious disease. So there's flyers going out. We're helping them with some area of butters notices. So I, we think that that'll be a great springboard for some more small baby step events going forward as, as we all try to, um, you know, come out of, of the COVID time period. We do have, uh, the YMCA in Reading is sponsoring a health day for the kids. So naturally we're going to go down and teach electrical safety and education to them. And that's supposed to be on May 11th. Only one more issue that I wanted to talk about, and that is, you know, every year we have to look at all of the rebates and programs that we do because if you remember, when we first gave out rebates for window air conditioning and every year we'd say, okay, in order for that to be a benefit to both the RMLD and to the customers, we would increase the SEER rating. And then we went from windows to whole house, house air conditioning. And we continue to do that every year. What is the best way to spend the customer money in order to give a benefit back to the RMLD and the customers? So we're going to, we're in the process of doing that. We may have some rebate changes, additions, and that will come as part of the class cost of service study that we're running right now that Greg and Chuck will be presenting probably next month and see how that, how that fans out and, and we'll give you the update on that. So that's all I've got for right now. Um, if, if there's any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. All right. Do we want to go into the review of policies again?
Right.
Back to Colleen.
Okay. Um, and I apologize, Marlena. I didn't put a copy of our policy review schedule. We, you know, I, we, we changed it a while ago that they didn't have review dates. So now we have about a three-year review date and we go through them and we scrub them for law and other things. And so I can give you that table. But this, uh, this month, um, and we spent a lot of time on policy 30, which was a really important, but we got a little bit behind on our policies. So there's a couple, a couple few of them that, uh, there's recommending no changes and that's on the safety review. We run a pretty tight safety review team. Uh, two, we have two committees, both the electrical and the general. And we meet all of this criteria. So I'm not recommending any changes and there's nothing in the industry that would warrant any legal changes or anything with best utility practices. So that is policy three. Do you want to get a vote on each one or at the end, or how do you want to do this, uh, chair? Do you, you want to just, you want me to go through each one of them and then we can vote through them?
I, I, I would say very quickly, if you could go through them, Colleen. Just, just if you're familiar.
Okay. Uh, policy six is our drug and alcohol free workplace. And as you know, I, I've been working really hard over the last six years to get everyone in all of our union contracts on drug and alcohol free. We have a lot of CDL testing, uh, and a lot of the drug and alcohol has also been, is put into their collective bargaining agreement. So I'm not suggesting any updates on that. So we'll just have another review date for, of three years. The next one is the facility use. Now I have a very minor comment on that. Technically, it's not incorrect, but we, we've been asked to clarify it. The intent of the use was to allow things that did not adversely impact our ability to meet all of our NERC compliances. That's all on cybersecurity. It has to do with a lot of our electric distribution system. And also to limit the people that use any of this facility. We are not a public building like a library. Okay. We're very much different. We're not really open to the public, but we did change this in 2016 to say, if you are a town board, you can use this, you just have to have a town liability and that would name the RMLD harmless. So with that, this is a clarification that's just basically allowing the bike event that has been here for many, many years because that is not technically a business, a business use or training. But that wasn't the intent of it. The front parking lot is not in a NERC secured area and it's not in a NERC secured area in the building. So I'm just recommending those red lines. And that's basically all the change does. That's policy 13. And then, uh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, on, on, on policy 13, I'm, I'm, so one of the things that, and, and Phil pointed out correctly, I, I had started an email question and I shouldn't have, I should have waited until the meeting came out. The RMLD facility is a, it's a great facility that is, I've been in it and it's a great room to be in. And then it is closed and, you know, being a resident, I've tried to use it, use rooms in the town. And I've been in sports organizations. We wanted to watch film. People wanted to get together and it's very, very limited as where you can go in Reading and Reading Light has a great building. Now, when you talk about NERC, I'm familiar with NERC. That whole building, you know, I understand the role of distribution in NERC and it's very finite, you know, you got a NERC room, you got a control room. Yeah, you, your access to that control was locked behind a, a door. So I would expect that a, a, a definition of NERC and not allowing it to the people with the building are too, they're completely different in my point of view. So I, I, I'm, what I'm looking for is allow that room access to folks. I mean, the, the sound, say you're going to get a liability waiver to use a room, that's, that's, that's extreme. Right? We're, we're a public utility, we're a facility in Reading and it has a great room to use. I, I, I guess my, my concern is it's, we're putting limitations on it that are unneeded or unwarranted. So I, I, that's, that's my statement on that.
Can, can I speak to that?
Yes.
So when I came here, it was actually open to the public. We, there was knitting clubs. There was old fashioned vintage cars. We've had vandalism in the building. We, we are not set up like a public, open public building. And we, um, we don't have custodians. We have two maintenance people. So when you use the building, it isn't just NERC compliance. It's, um, it's not set up to, to, to isolate certain areas and certain usages without having paid overtime for people to monitor it. And so we had made the decision in 2016 to limit it to all, all towns in our service territory and any committee that's covered under their liability to protect the RMLD and its facilities and to, you know, use the building as it's intended, which again, is not the intention of it being like an open library. That was the reason why it was originally changed.
Well, and, and, you know, today's technology with cameras, we can protect the facility. If someone does vandalism, it can very easily be corrected. Or identified anybody who goes into a, in, inappropriate area. So I think cameras, um, as the, you know, the use and, and having someone, maybe there's a room fee that gets associated with it. But again, we don't want to make it prohibitive. So I think that, you know, the running light and, and again, I'm opening up discussion for everybody.
Yeah.
I just want to see that room used for other folks. You know, I, I, do I want to see it used for business? No, but I think if you're a community organization, that should be an, an open room and, and available for you to use. Because it does have some good, it has good resources that you can use. And, you know, we could set up a schedule. I, I, I would not want to vote on that right now personally.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just want to kind of.
Yeah, I, I just want to kind of basically echo what you're saying. And I, I think it, I think it's worth. Taking another look at that policy and splitting the difference a little bit with. The concerns Colleen's articulating, but I also, I, I agree with the spirit of what you're saying. Especially this is now this big new patio out back and. It is a very big building. And, um. I think there should be a way to allow it to be more open, especially if there's an energy education piece that we can be doing. It's a, there's a display in there or something that's. Helps kids learn stuff.
Sure. Uh, maybe a proper suggestion is once COVID ends, maybe we can revisit the policy. At that point, I mean, there's no, there's no way anybody's getting into the building right now, but maybe we can revisit this particular policy at a later date.
And does Phil have perspective from all the years of like how, any problems or whatever?
You're on mute, Phil.
You're on mute, Phil.
Still on mute, Phil?
About that, I keep forgetting. There were problems in the building. As, as Colleen mentioned, there was vandalism. We had people parked illegally in places out in the parking lot that blocked people from getting in and getting out. You know, particularly some of the buildings in the back, some of the, the. Fire equipment was, would not have been able to get in to the back area. So we had to be aware of that very much. And, and, you know, it comes down to, you know, what's our purpose? You know, is our purpose to be good neighbor, you know, provide for all these groups? Are, are we in the? The wires business, you know, we're in the wires business and that's kind of what the decision that drove with the decision that the board made back at that time. You know? So. I mean, can we revisit the issue? I'm no, no, no objection to revisiting the issue. It's just that I'm concerned with, you know, how the, how the building is going to get used. You know, and whether there's going to be a detriment to the use of the building.
Can I add what we do use the building for right now that comes under the policy? So for example, the police department runs their RAD. All of their RAD, um, self-defense programs come in. So that's for the public. But it's sponsored by the police department that comes under the town. So they get to come in and they get to use the facility. So it's those types of groups. We also sponsor a lot of training for technical engineering at other MLPs that come in and use the building. We would, in most cases are in attendance in that, but sometimes we're not. So we allow those type of uses. So there are uses, but they're, they're generally limited to. You know, limiting the amount of money that we spend on, on costs that are not related to, directly related to the business. Unless they, they fit into these special cases under towns and boards. So. I, I would just ask that if, if you're okay with the clarification, because technically it wasn't wrong. The bike event has been here forever and I'd still like to have it out front. And the first sentence kind of makes it sound like without the comma, that if it's not business related. They can't do that. And that wasn't the intent of it. So. If that's okay. Uh, I don't know if you want to say it's okay. And then we, after COVID, I can put it on the list to bring it back and we can revise it again.
Sure. I say. We can make a. Motion right now to allow the bike event to occur.
What did you ask for? What are you waiting for here?
Are you, a motion to, because all I'm changing it is technically so that the bike event, so that the front parking lot can be used. By a town or a board or a committee with that liability, but it can be for public use for like a bike event. That's the red line change.
Is that what's in the, that's just in the policy that you've got here?
Yes.
Okay. So.
It, it.
What am I doing?
Well, I can.
I move that we accept the policy. With the changes as included in the document of which we have received in the agenda.
Is that policy three or policy?
That's policy 13. We didn't vote on.
13, policy 13, what we're voting on.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
As, as in the agenda.
Okay. Take a roll call vote.
Mr. Stampack eye.
Ms. Vecino eye.
Talbot eye.
Marlena, I.
Gold right.
May I ask a second to that?
John. I, I second it. John, step back.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, Chair? Would you like me to have the next review date instead of putting in a date? Would you like me to say when the Board of Health opens the building or something like that? Or make it next year? Or what would you like me?
Yes, but yes, Colleen, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Is that okay? Does that have, okay. Okay. The last one I have, uh, it's, you don't have a copy of it. I'm just going to speak to it for a second is policy 19. Now. Now we have two changes, so it, I'll, I'll present it, uh, to you that you can read for the next meeting. But we did just talk about policy 19 change that would. Hold on one second. What did we just talk about? There was a policy 19 change that had to do with. How we're voting in what order that the person that's going to be chair is not up for election. That's actually in policy 19. So I'm going to be, we just kind of voted on that one and there's a mistake in it. There's a section that has the committees. And actually like the GM committee got dissolved. I, what I'd like to do is take that section out, make it an attachment. So anytime we add a committee or we dissolve a committee or how we're, if we want to make a change of. The, the AP process or things like that, because we'll mark it up with exactly how it's done and we can vote on it next month. But I can also add in there what you just spoke about. Um, and, and Commissioner Talbot said about. Making the next chair so that they're not the ones that are going through the election, correct? With.
That was the spirit of it. Yep.
Okay. And, and I'm going to take the committees and stuff, the audit committee and everything and put it in attachment. So if that changes, we don't have to look at the whole. The whole policy will just be that section.
Okay.
Okay. So I think I still need a vote on no changes for three and 16.
You ready for the motion? Okay. Move, uh, that policy three safety committee be scheduled for the next periodic review without change.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Stampack eye.
Ms. Vecino eye.
Talbot eye.
Marlena Bita eye.
Mr. Gold right.
Move that policy six drug free workplace be scheduled for the next periodic review without change.
Second. Roll call vote please. I'm too, too quick, John. I'm learning. Got to get my, got to get my words down.
And, and Bob, usually they, after the second, you say, is there any discussion on this? And then we vote, but that's okay.
Okay. Okay.
You got it.
Okay, roll call vote. Let's go.
Mr. Stampack eye.
Ms. Vecino eye.
Talbot eye.
Marlena Bita eye.
Gold right.
So now policy 13, move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy 13 facilities used. As presented. On the recommendation, General Manager to be reviewed when the building is, when the Board of Health. Allows the building to be open again.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Stampack eye.
Ms. Vecino eye.
Talbot eye.
Marlena Bita eye.
Mr. Gold right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, item number seven, power supply update. Mr. Underhill. If you may.
Good evening. Okay, next slide please. So this is basically a continuation of a slide we started last year. And it's showing, uh, where this year's loads are fitting between. What we used as an ENE forecast for the budget. And where we actually finished for 2020. And. So far this year, we're running about 2.4% below the ENE budget numbers. And we're running 2.3% above. Where we were last year. So, uh, we're showing an uptick in load. But not as. Optimistic as we had, uh, put in the power supply budget. And a lot of this is weather driven, uh, when we look at. What happens in January, February and March. So, uh, next slide please. Very quickly. We are already off to a good start this year. We have experienced in both January and February. Actual power supply costs. Below the budgeted amounts and we're starting to see. A, a pretty good cumulative differential. This is the sum of the energy capacity and, uh, transmission expenses that we're seeing. Next slide please. Half our power supply cost is in energy. And what we're seeing is that in both January and February. We have. Been above where or better than, uh, where we had budgeted things. So we do have a positive cumulative differential there. Next please. This is capacity. Capacities cost us a little bit more. Then we anticipated, but, uh, when we're talking a 70 to 75 million dollar budget. And we're talking, uh, 50 to $75,000 cumulative at this point in the year. We're, we're not talking anything to be concerned about. Next slide please. Transmission, uh, we're actually, uh, showing that we are, uh, ahead of the game. And I believe that in February, uh, we actually received a credit. From National Grid, uh, for transmission, for sub transmission expense. And National Grid uses a formula rate. So every month. Their values fluctuated is not a. Consistent amount that we expect to be billed. So. Next slide please. This is, uh, indicative of how our portfolio is performing. The black line. Is the forecasted load and the top of the bar chart indicates where our actual loads ended up. So, uh, what we see is that in January, uh, our actual loads. Were slightly under the budget and in February. Our actual loads were, uh, slightly above, uh, the budgeted amounts. And you can see, uh, where the generation is, uh, from each of our portfolios. From each of our, uh, portfolio resources. And next era is, uh, by far the largest, uh, component of our budget. The nuclear units performed well. The. Next era units, uh, were good and our market share was. Within the tolerances that we built into the budget for risk mitigation. So. Next slide please. And I will now hand it over to Mr. Fitz.
Well, uh, next slide please. So we're going to talk about, just following up on, uh, um. Chuck's comment in terms of power supply. We're going to talk about a, another. Power portfolio addition. Um, I'll talk a little bit about that and ask for a motion after that. That'll be the slide in just a moment. And then we'll talk a little about the, the climate bill and policy 30 update. The emphasis there is going to be more on the retail side. And then, uh, set the stage for the last one, which ties into the policy 30 revision one update, but start, uh, the dialogue on the renewable choice. Those will be the three topics that we talk about here for a few moments. Uh, next slide. So, um. If you could shrink that, John, just that, that'll work perfect. Um, so there we go. Great. So, um, as you know, right, uh, in our power portfolio, um, we try, uh, from the perspective of risk mitigation and stability to, uh, have a significant portion of our. Power supply and their long-term, uh, long-term contracts. And, uh, obviously in the context of the, uh, climate bill, what we used to call roadmap 2050. We've spent quite a bit of time the past several months talking about that. Um, but with that now being law. There's a lot of interest in, in terms of, uh, securing power supply from non-carbon resources. Uh, non-carbon is the new metric based on the new bill. And, um, so we, as you remember from the last meeting. We are pursuing a hydro facility in Connecticut. And we're getting further down the road based on the approval you guys gave us last month. In that discussion, um, there's another facility. There's not many of these hydro facilities in New England that are available, but, uh. There's a, a facility also under the control of Gravity Renewables. If you remember Gravity Renewables, these, uh, guys focus. Exclusively or almost exclusively on, on hydro facilities. They look at the, they take the long game like we do. Um, they look to make these facilities, uh, run well and be, uh, environmentally friendly. So this particular facility, uh, is one that is, uh, just across the border, uh, up near Saratoga, Saratoga Springs and, uh, in New York, just across the, the Hudson. In fact, it is at the confluence of the Hudson and, uh, the Baton Kill rivers. It's a rural recreational area. That picture on the left is the actual facility. What's noteworthy about that is that it is a natural waterfall and the dam is at the very top. So it is, uh. It is not a facility as we think about, uh, environmental issues. It's, uh, not a facility that will require any sort of a fish ladder. There's no natural fish migration up this particular part of, uh, of the river system. It was, uh, established back in 1925. So it's a pretty, uh, well, it's a well-established, uh, facility. Gravity acquired it back in 2019. They're just completing up this year, a multi-year upgrade since they purchased it. Which is typical what they do when they acquire new facilities or existing facilities and renovate them and renew them. There's, uh, because it is, uh, it was licensed. Back in, uh, the early nineties under a FERC license. Again, the FERC license is a, uh, obviously a federal program, national program. So there's a lot of requirements and documentation. All publicly filed, uh, documents. This looks like a very clean facility from a, an environmental perspective, um, and also from a reliability perspective. As we look at it, we're looking at this one also being a 25 year term. Uh, we would probably start it, uh, with your approval, of course. To, uh, look at taking power from it, starting in this summer, summer 2021. It would represent, um, uh, it's a seasonal, uh, uh, river. But it, uh, in total, it represents about 5.5% of our portfolio. So it's big enough to make it of interest to us. But it's not a significant portion. Um, it also has, which is important to us, Connecticut Class, um, one certificates. And that is important, um, in terms of how we, uh, define. Non-carbon energy and it's also critically important in terms of, uh, our requirement to start reporting on annual basis. The, uh, the compliance relative to the climate bill. Um, the pricing is very similar, just a little bit below, but it's very similar to what, um, the other project is and our, uh, average hydro cost, uh, in our portfolio. Um, and so, uh, we want to move forward on this project. We want to move forward, forward fairly quickly as we talked about before. There's a limited number of these, um, uh, non-carbon facilities and, uh. Given our relationship and our size, we'd like to move fairly quickly. So. I want to just pause at this point in this presentation and ask if it's appropriate to, uh, ask for a motion for approval to move forward to this project.
I'd just like to make a, if I, Mr. Chair, if I may, make a comment.
Yes, please, John.
So I, I just want to make sure that we've. Researched this, uh, facility extensively, uh, to make sure that there's no environmental. Impacts, uh, that. Could come back to haunt us. And what I mean by that is, uh, have we done any survey of, for example, the. Local newspapers for the past two years to make sure no one has. Filed anything. I mean, I know, I realize there's filed public documents, but. Are there any kind of community concerns that we should be aware of?
On that particular note, we are, uh, just starting our due diligence process. We didn't want to get ahead of you, but the environmental and the context of everything we've been through in the past six months is a critical issue for us. Not just for now, but looking down the road. So we will do that due diligence, but also, uh, as, as, um, as you guys are aware, the FERC process is also extremely stringent. And what I, what I didn't mention. Is that this particular facility that Gravity will be starting next year, another FERC relicensing process. So it will again be under a pretty slight, tight, tight scrutiny, but we will do the appropriate due diligence as well.
Good, thank you.
Good caution.
And, and just as an aside. I've gone trout fishing on the Baton Kelp. It's a beautiful river. It's a beautiful river.
It's known for that. It is.
Greg, quick question. On this, if it's obviously flow dependent on on this river, do you pay regardless if if it's a drought, are we still, do you still pay in the contract? Or is it just if it flows goes?
We're we're yeah, we're paying on what gets delivered. What what is important from that, though, Bob? And we talked a little about that in the last discussion is, you know, to make sure that it matches our our requirements of both on and off peak on a daily basis, but also seasonal. And it obviously has a seasonal pattern to it. And so what we've, a good thing about this one is they have some scheduling capability in terms of not not a lot, but they have some scheduling capability on a day by day basis. Not so much a seasonal basis. So we try to make sure that that matches our our portfolio needs, but it is a it is a factor on hydro. So we couldn't ever be all hydro, but having that as a piece of our portfolio makes a lot of sense.
Is there any further discussion?
Ready for motion?
Okay.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just to address John's point, should we actually be putting in the motion? I'm thinking after the word execute a contract, put in it there after add after that after proper due diligence. Should we be adding that as part of the motion?
That sounds acceptable.
I'll make the motion then. Move to the board of commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute a contract after proper due diligence with Gravity Renewables for energy, including associated certificates from a hydro facility in New York on the recommendation of the Citizen Advisory Board and the General Manager.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Done heard for a roll call vote?
Mr. Stempac, aye.
Mr. Speaker, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Mr. Gold, aye. Motion passes. Okay.
Very good. Mr. Colt, if I may continue, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Great. Next slide please. So obviously, recently, we spend a lot of time on the wholesale side. And as you know, we have responsibility for the retail side of the business as well that we continue to spend time on, even though we have not been talking about that much lately at these presentations. Just a quick update. Colleen did mention a few things that are coming down the road. Obviously, the climate bill is with its focus on electrification, both electrification and also non-carbon sources. It is, it will have a significant impact in terms of how we think about the business. And I say the business, the retail side as well, the wholesale side going forward. And obviously, this is not new, but we're starting to dig into that. One of the things that we're looking at is updating our forecast models in the context of electrification in terms of the load. And then obviously, you know, as as Chuck mentioned, how we backfill that with purchase power. So one of the items here, just to keep in mind, is that the rebate program that we've had in place for quite some time, and we made a lot of changes to it last year. And as Colin mentioned in our opening comments, we continue to look at that. One of the things that's happening is that the air source heat pump, which is focused on the HVAC on the residential and small commercial side of our business. It is an it is a component of the electrification and the drive toward non-carbon. It is actually embedded in the the climate bill as are some implications on transportation as well, but those all impact our retail load. And so one of the things that we're in our forecasted our model, we're looking at at least initially about a one percent increase per year over the next ten years. So by twenty thirty, after after a decade of fairly flat load growth, we anticipate starting to see load growth creep up again. As you see in that second bullet, the HVAC, the the air source heat pump, those applications have started to increase in these past few months. We were averaging late last year into January about ten per month, and now we're looking at about thirty per month. That's all good news. The other element that you're going to see on all of this is that it's going to have impact on our on our rates. And as Colleen mentioned, we are finishing up a cost of service study. We'll have more details on that output next month. But there's generally speaking, our costs continue to go up and it's driven up by, as you can see, a couple of items here. How we think about our our incentive program and our rebate program to drive that electrification, that's a factor that drives it. There's also obviously the operating costs continue to go up on a regular basis. As Wendy's mentioned in the past, the average about three percent per year. We're looking at that Energy Conservation and Electrification Fund that talks about the rebates. Right now, we are at a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour, which is below on a rate level. The average, both from our other MLPs as well as the IOUs. Given the size, though, we tend to collect more money and spend more money. So our our rebate program is pretty comprehensive and it's, I think it's actually the largest of the all of the MLPs. But to support the ongoing growth, we will be coming back most likely with a recommendation to move that from a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. We'll have more details on that, but just to give you an idea, that's another component. That item C there is obviously our transition, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Our transition to start retiring a increasing portion of our certificates. And certificates include REX. That's going to have an impact in terms of how we handle the the energy cost that Chuck walked us through a few moments ago. We're also going to, as part of this rate study, take a look at our solar net metering policies and procedures. That impacts not only the rates, but it also impacts the E and O. So Hamed and his team in terms of how we think about loading the the network and how we think about building out the network. And also, part of that rate study is looking at rates, particularly off-peak evening hours, how that can help not only to help drive EV growth. Currently, our rebate program is focused on chargers, but we're looking at opportunities in terms of rates to actually be a stronger motivator in terms of of net costs to operate an EV vehicle. We'll have more on that next week, I mean, next month. But what I want you to understand is that a lot of work that's being that's going on right now relative to the retail side of the business. And we're going to present the cost of service stuff at the the next month. Next slide please. Actually, go one more slide. I'm going to come back to this one, just in turn to make any order. I mentioned the certificate update. As Chuck had walked through, right, there are a couple of main components, right? We have in our cost of energy, we have the energy side, the capacity side and the transmission side. And our certificate, our historical practice of selling certificates actually reduced our energy cost. And now, obviously, from what we decided two months ago, our our revision one to policy thirty, we're now going to start retiring those. So the the revenue or the cost offset to our energy costs that we have been receiving historically will will that will taper down. It's important as we go through and we need to hit compliance targets, both compliance targets at the state level, but also compliance targets that we had set in part of policy thirty. That revision one, we have that annualized line. It's going to be important that we that we track very carefully our effects and our NIPA certificates as well. So we're making, we're in the process of making sure that those get put into our RMLD NEEPOL GIS. That NEEPOL GIS is for the entire region. So all of the certificates tend to get recorded and managed there, and we want to make sure that the effects and NIPA are all there. As we talked about last month and the month before, the policy thirty revision one, our strategy is to retire certificates up to the annualized policy thirty line and then sell the balance. And if you guys remember, in twenty twenty-one, that target is twenty-three percent of our energy sales. We're going to retire those certificates. And we're going to start that process this year in twenty twenty-one. And so as we go through, if you remember that graphic there, that's that's shown there from our previous one, these certificates get generated each quarter, and then that blue box below them, they get minted roughly six months later. And so there is a window of opportunity for us to transact those certificates, whether we sell them or retire them in those windows. In that particular case, the first, the Q ones would be July fifteenth to September fifteenth. So it's our intention, as we mentioned last time, to report to you on a quarterly basis on the transactions that we are anticipating. So you're going to see every quarter, July, October, January and April, what we're planning to do, just so you know what's going on in the interest of transparency. Those will become part of our regular reporting every quarter, and there'll be some graphics tied to it as well. We envision basically having a chart that is a buy certificate, opening balance, purchases, the certificates that we need to buy on a regular basis, retirements and sales, and then ending balance. So you're going to see that as a detail, as a regular slide each quarter. The last piece is, as we finish off the end of twenty twenty last year, under the policy thirty revision zero, there is, remember that six-month lag? There were approximately fifteen thousand four hundred certificates that were purchased by RMLD as part of our our purchase agreements from the fourth quarter of twenty twenty. We're in the process of selling those, which we need to make sure we do between now and June fifteenth so that they're not forfeited. Those are primarily a bunch of Maine, Vermont, Connecticut and Massachusetts Class Two and Class One certificates of various forms. It totals about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that is our intention to kind of finish that chapter of policy thirty rev zero with that action for the fourth quarter of last year and then starting in January, transition to the rev one where we're starting to retire and report to that on a regular basis. Make sense? Any questions? I'm going to jump to the last slide here in just a second.
Go ahead, please finish quick.
All right, so I'm going to if you scroll back up one slide. So this was, I know Commissioner Abada, you wanted to talk about this, but we, just to let everybody know, we want to give you guys an update anyways in terms of renewable choice. Renewable choice is one of the things that we had in the revision revision ones of the policy. The intention, I'll walk through these in terms of what where we are and and give you guys an update in terms of the thought process. The goal behind that, at least our original goal, was to offer a one hundred percent non-carbon option to the rate payers. Right now, just given the way that we are retiring on an annualized basis X percent, all the rate payers will be participating up to that annualized line. And just the way we've structured the policy, everybody participates. What we intended to do for the renewable choice is to allow rate payers to participate incrementally above that annualized line. And the goal would be a hundred percent non-carbon option. At some point, we might option, we might offer a seventy-five percent, but that's down the road. So right now, we're basically structuring a hundred percent non-carbon option for rate payers. So keep in mind, this would be incremental above the existing annualized line. On that note, the new given, given the climate bill, the new metric is carbon, right? So non-carbon, we think the more appropriate name for this is going to be non-carbon choice, just to be real clear in terms of of how we're thinking about this. Just so you know, we've had, we've been having this discussion since last summer with two of our larger industrials focused primarily on what they and us were calling a green tariff. But the intention there was to provide to them certificates, or I should say certificates, a mechanism for them to basically report to their supply chain and to their corporate management the amount of power that's green. And so we've been linking that to a potential wind project that we're in the middle of securing as well as how we process it through the the logistics of our of the climate bill. There's a lot of details and you'll hear this, and you've heard this all along from from Wendy. You'll hear this again later on. But in terms of all the accounting, in terms of how we how we implement that, that has to be digested as well as DPU filing consideration as well. So there's a lot going on that we've already been working on. The guardrails on this also is important that remember, we as RMLD and and the whole entity, we are the compliance requirement from the climate bill is retirement of X percent or not X percent, but X numbers of certificates. So we want to make sure we structure this in terms of maintaining the ownership in the RMLD NEEPOL GIS account so that we hit the state requirements, yet still allow the customers to persist to persist or have the option to persist or participate in a non hundred percent non-carbon option. The two mechanisms that we're looking at, and I probably should have drew up in a a chart for this, but basically, the two concepts right now are retire more and buy more. The retire more, basically, if you think about it, our stacked bar chart, we have roughly forty percent of our twenty twenty-one portfolio has certificates with it. And for this year, with our internal policy, we're going to retire twenty-three percent of those certificates. The idea behind retire more is to whatever, who the the funds that are basically associated with this non-carbon choice would get applied to that to that stack so that we would actually retire a higher percentage of our certificates and not sell them. That's one scenario that was highly likely. We'll give you some details next month, but that's the retire more option. The buy more option is we have forty percent this year, and it keeps going up each year based on the contracts in terms of what we're securing with associated certificates. And the thought process, particularly for the commercials, this kind of goes back to the green tariff, is to use those funds to actually buy more certificates. So we think a mixture of both of those will fit into it, whether it's a commercial, industrial or residential. But just for to kind of a placeholder, there's a lot of work that's been done on this already. We've got a lot, it's a fairly complex puzzle, but we've made a lot of progress in terms of figuring out how that might look. So that's mainly an update, not a final report. It'll realistically, it'll be probably another two months at least before we finalize that. And so that's just a quick update on that topic. Questions and comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Phil, please.
Yeah, so if I wanted to go into this, I mean, you know, I would have to sign up as I understand this. Is that correct? I would sign up like cylinder what we had with the similar to what we had with the solar choice, one and two. You muted Greg, by the way.
Yep, 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 exactly right. Keep going.
I imagine you've got some sort of cost that I would be subject for. Do you have any idea of what the additional cost would be that we're talking about with the rate payers? Now, I bring this in context of the study that we had, it's been cited many times if you want to pay more. So, you know, I'm wondering what we're actually looking for maybe cost on this, the additional cost to I as the rate payer, if I want to go into this program.
So so Phil, that's one of the modeling that Chuck and I and our team are walking through. That cost depends heavily in terms of which certificates, which REX, but I'll use certificates because that's the broader term, are associated with this hundred percent non-carbon. Effects are less valuable than mass or Connecticut Class One. So we haven't laid out the model completely yet. We're working through that analysis, but you're you're exactly right that that raises a question. And not only, keep in mind that the value of those change over time, literally every two weeks, the value of those certificates. And so we want to figure out something that has some longevity. And related to that is the ability for people to opt in or opt out, particularly if they jump in and then make a change later. We have to make sure that that we accommodate that as well. So there's a lot of moving parts. I don't have a specific answer, but we'll have a little more analysis realistically month after next.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Greg, if I could please ask, I I know you on the retail part of the policy, you did a great job explaining metrics. Are you going to put, is there any way for you to put a metric behind the retail side on on how we're doing on incentives, like, you know, I don't know if a bar chart, you know, like you said, are are we're running at the end of the amount of money that the state's going to supply? Maybe a simple bar chart, like, you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars left or or whatever on on the retail side. And then on, you know, as people are getting more engaged in the rebates and EV and air pumps, you know, again, the the same thing, if we if we have a X amount, you know, are we going to be able to see? Like you said, you're we're seeing a potential increase from, you know, from point oh one to point oh three. So, you know, is there any metric of can you can you think about that?
Yeah, well, actually, so we've updated our annual budget. We put a lot more detail into it to account for the the growth, which is part of the reason why we have a pretty solid idea that that three tenths, you know, from one tenth to three tenths program supplies itself. But the other thing that that raises in terms of how we think about the mechanism in terms of we let that float? Do we do we tie it into a mechanism that that adjusts on a rolling quarterly, you know, every three month basis? So we we've got a couple of models that we're playing around with and looking at the impact from a rate payer perspective. And then from, you know, the the impact in terms of the economics of the business in aggregate. So we will, one of the things that we will be doing is, you know, what's the status of the rebates over time? How does it compare to our budget, the rebate budget? So not only in terms of number of rebates, but the dollars of the rebates. In the case of the air source heat pump, that's target, that's tied to, the rebates are tied to the size of the unit, not the number of units. So if it's a two-ton unit versus a four-ton unit, the rebates are different. So we've actually got some, we've actually got some bar charts, et cetera. And yet we can, we could put those into either the monthly or the quarterly updates in terms of where those programs look like, because it will become a bigger piece of the the budget, not a huge piece, but a bigger piece. So we'll take that as an action item.
Is there any other questions? All right. If not, if
Alright, if not, if we could move on to item ten, Hameed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just, I had in here Commissioner Vita wanted to talk about opt-in, opt-out.
I'm very sorry, I had rolled up beyond your line. I'm fired already.
Okay.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Peter, please.
Alright, let me see if I can share my screen. It's only three and a half minutes. And it's in line with what Greg was just talking about. Okay, so I'll just read it. It's just a few pages. It's about maximizing the revenue from renewable choice or.
Would you like me to share the screen?
Oh, you can't see it?
No, we cannot. No, we can't. Did you want to email it to Kathleen? She could put it up?
I have it. I'll put it up.
Okay, I got Kathleen, I used share and it's up. Maybe mine is just so slow, whatever. I don't know. Thank you, Kathleen.
Seeing it now?
Welcome. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
So these few slides are about paying for renewable energy. And we want to maximize as much revenue as we can because there was a lot of data in the survey that the customers did in two thousand and twenty. Where they said they did want aggressive action, sixty-seven percent of them responded that they would like RMLD to be aggressive back to goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Kathleen, could you move the slide up to the second slide, I think? There we go. Okay, sorry, sorry, Marlene, we couldn't see it.
No, I'm sorry. The residential and commercial ratepayers both wanted aggressive action with respect to reducing greenhouse gas emissions with sixty-seven percent of residential RMLD respondents saying that and sixty-one point eight percent of the commercial respondents saying that. And on slide three. Can you see that? By an almost two to one margin, customers say they are willing to pay more. With the big number being that fifty-eight point three percent are willing to pay between five and twenty-five percent more for renewable energy and thirty-one point four percent saying they're willing, not willing to pay more. And ten percent, point three percent saying that they didn't answer the question or they just didn't know. So on slide four. It's about. What do we do with this and what is the appropriate rate policy? For when fifty-eight percent of the ratepayers are willing to pay more? How can RMLD capture this potential revenue stream and how can RMLD accelerate the transition to cleaner energy? So in slide five. There was a study in two thousand and eighteen by the National Renewable Energy Lab. I think it's an arm of Department of Energy. And they say that utilities use opt-in rates, only five to twenty percent of the customers participate. But when utilities use opt-out rates, about eighty-five percent or more of customers do tend to stay in. So even with opt-out, customers will still have choice and they can say no to the premium. Don Newell is the general manager at Wellesley Munich Light. They tried an opt-in program, but only ten percent of their ratepayers were participating. So a year ago, town meeting intervened and said, we'll try an opt-out program. It officially rose out on July first of this year. He said that I could call him and see how it's going throughout the summer in terms of numbers. They do expect eighty to eighty-five percent of their residents to remain enrolled. And the rate, he said it's not firm, but he thinks it's going to be a four percent surcharge to help them generate their goal of five hundred thousand dollars per year for battery storage and solar arrays on municipal buildings.
Is there another slide?
Yes, slide. Well, that was six.
Oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Do you want me to go to the next one now?
Put up six for a second.
Okay.
Since I just read it. So they had, just to review the Wellesley one, they had ten percent of people responding when they had an opt-in program. And so far, it looks really positive for their opt-out program. So slide seven. Should we, the RMLD Commission, consider an opt-out program? I think our ratepayers have spoken through that survey and the national data from the NREL study shows that it does work and we can still protect those who are unwilling or really more importantly unable to pay more. And we could explore an opt-out rate structure to accelerate clean transition through data-driven policy. And that's it. So questions or comments?
I have a, I have a question and a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair. Also, to add to that, my my sister lives in Westford and she gets from, I think it's National Grid, a similar thing where they they come at you saying, I'm gonna raise your rates five percent. If you don't want me to, you don't have to take it. Or if you want, I can volunteer for ten percent. And it's sort of what Commissioner Beat is saying is that when you put it that way, people tend to say, okay, I'll I'll spend an extra five, ten bucks a month and but they can say no. But it's just, it's if it's if you do it and present it as an opt-out where it's 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 imposed unless they say no, you're going to get a lot more participation and a lot more funds in to capture all of this revenue that people are willing to give and and help Greg and Colleen, you know, buy the recs and do the stuff that Greg was just talking about, you know, and if we do just the opt-in, which I think is what the policy thirty says. The data says we're not going to get big participation just because people have to go to the work. So that's all. And I, my sister experiences in Westford in in a IOU context, it's 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 shown to work. So thank you for that, Commissioner Vita.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a comment as well. So I'm I'm kind of torn between the two, quite frankly, and and in in the sense that there's an experiment going on already. Was this Wellesley who was doing this?
Yep.
So we could, one, wait to see what Wellesley does and see whether they actually do achieve it or not. Or, you know, the the opt, the opt-out process. I I worry about people who don't have, let's say, computers and don't realize what opt-out or opt-in means. And if we could take care of them, then that certainly provides a path forward for doing this. But I think it's the my reflection on the survey that was taken is that if people were pure and true to their, you know, X number of over fifty percent decided they wanted to pay more, that you should be getting them to pay more on the opt-in option. But I'm I'm ambivalent between the two, quite frankly. Even even with sort of the data that you've shown from the the DOE, it was a DOE data.
Yeah, NREL of the DOE, but didn't we try an opt-in and it was underserved?
I don't, I'm not aware of that.
Not aware of that.
What about?
On our time use meters, right, isn't it? That's our time use meters, we we do opt-in. And I, we only have a few hundred. And I know that's something that we want to have people take. We have twenty-six thousand meters and only what? How many hundreds have taken it? Five or six hundred after ten years?
Right.
I mean, this is something where we would like people to take this program because it it helps suppress the peak. So it's just a behavioral thing, right? Everybody I talked to about time use meters, oh, that's a great idea, but do they go make the phone call, you know?
Yeah.
Right, that's it.
You're absolutely right. I mean, that that's it. I mean, it's a behavioral issue. So I'm not sure. I I think I have to think about it a little bit more.
In other contexts then and researching opt-out programs, when a company offers a 401K or a healthcare, it's always opt-out. They just automatically enroll you and that's how they get participation.
Well, I think we're talking slightly apples and oranges.
Of course, but just to liken to the people who you say might not have a computer or something like they are familiar with opt-out programs. Maybe in other contexts. And they do it. But if um, if they can call and to opt out, I would that help appease the concern for people who don't have a computer?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, if I may.
Yes, please.
I think any form of communication, Marlene, would be great in terms of telling them how the program would work and trying to make it as simple as possible so that you could do the opt-out or opt-in. And I know you, the opt-out is where you're you're coming from. And so that I, I don't know, I I mean, maybe running a test case on this. You know, in terms of not necessarily focus groups, but maybe a subsector of of the population in terms of seeing how they would receive it. Maybe a a more interesting way of discerning whether they'd be able to do it or not. I mean, you've you've already got a population who says they want it, over fifty percent want it. So for them, I think it's would be a no-brainer to opt in. And so I'm not I'm not trying to I'm not trying to be negative on it. I'm really just.
It's fine. And I just want to tell you, you mentioned Wellesley. So at town meeting, it it is relevant that it passed overwhelmingly that they wanted to pursue this. So that was one measure. And now that it's already April, he said he's gotten a few phone calls, maybe two percent of the population have called and said, I want to be on that opt-out list for sure. Meaning, get me off of it. But he's feeling really good about it and he's he's been there for decades. But again, it doesn't officially roll out until July first, but that's around the corner and they're all aware of it. So we'll definitely follow up with him.
But and and another comment is it's your perception of red light, right? If you do an opt-in or opt-out, right? If you do an opt-out, that could be, that could be bad press, right? Unless it's communicated in a in a precise and prolonged manner. I think you could get a, you could get a press bomb, you know, it's just ju- just looking at Palmer, right? When Palmer got close to happening and it hit the press, it it exploded. So, I mean, good to talk about it, but when you go to execute, it's something, it's something different. So I think that 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 it it could stir the pot. I I that's again, that's that's my opinion. If you, people might perceive it as a as a as, you know, hey, you're just, you're just raising the rates without asking, right? It could be, it could be definitely a bad, a bad perception on red light as well.
Do we ask them if we can raise rates? I mean.
No, I I know, it it would be, it would be our decision, but based on, yes.
Those people could say, please take me off. Those, I agree with you, Bob. It it would have to be preceded by a long communication.
Yeah, you've got it.
But anybody who didn't like it can say no. And if it's like Wellesley is four percent, I think my bill is like a hundred bucks a month and it'd be at four dollars, you know? I mean, me just using that as a rough, I mean, this is not not huge money we're talking about here. It's a few bucks a month. And but.
Colleen?
Can I just make a suggestion? I mean, I think this is really a good idea to look into. If allow us to look at a program like this and maybe next month, we can say, okay, here's what an opt-out program looks like, here's the impact, here's what we could buy to make that happen. And here's what an opt-in program would look like. And that's kind of similar what we did with the time of use meters. I think back when we looked at that, because that was a good idea too, but at that time, a time of use meter was about another two hundred dollars on top of what a regular meter costs. So there was a lot of other concept that went into that, even though time of use opt-out was a great idea, you know what I mean? So as technology changes and as the price comes down, we can keep looking at that. So if you wouldn't mind, can we have staff take a look at this and maybe present it next month?
Please.
Good idea.
Great idea. I was gonna suggest the same thing myself. She was calling, beat me to it.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry, Phil, I stole it from you.
Alright, that's why you're the general manager.
That's it. Okay, alright, so we got a lot of stuff left. We got a long way to go and a short time to get there, right? So we got, alright, Hameed, if you want to take it away?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And let me just start by saying to Commissioner Vita, welcome aboard. Looking forward to meet you in person as soon as the pandemic mess is over. And we are all crisis. Anyway.
Thank you.
Proud to present the E and O report. Kathleen, could you please put the slides up? Okay, the first slide. Okay, the first slide, as you see, as I'm recording at every board meeting, these are the reliability indices. Basically, there are three indices that you know well, that they determine the well-being and the health of the system. These are the system average interruption duration index SAD or customer average interruption duration index KD and system average frequency interruption or SAFI, two durations and one frequency. As you could see for the past five years, RMLD has been outperforming with respect to the national and the regional averages. The regional averages are represented by the green bar, by green line, and also the national by the blue line. These data are being published by APP, American Public Power Associations. Every year we submit our, actually month to month, we're submitting our outage data and outage history to the to the APA. They they're going to put that information into the very sophisticated software called Irreliability Tracker. And the Irreliable Tracker is comparing all the utilities regionally as well as nationally. And usually in March of every year, they publish a report for the previous year to see how well they've been doing. So this is benchmarking for us to see kind of what we do. As you could see, the reliability is really great. Most people, I bet, they don't even remember when was the last time that they had a big outage, you know, and for the most part, the RMLD reliability is very strong and we're proud of that. Next slide, please. This slide shows the causes of outages that you know, whatever, even though our reliability is good, but what are the contributing factors? The highest contributing factor, if you could see, is the weather. With respect to the past five years, the blue bars, they show the past five years averages. And you could see that, you know, this year, I mean, we've had so many, last year especially, up to March. You could see that, you know, we've had many storms with respect to the last five years average. And that's a big, huge contributing factor to to the reliability and the outages that you may have experienced due to the weather, bringing trees down, you know, damaging the equipment or the poles down. The next report, the next slide, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm proud to announce that in two thousand and twenty, RMLD God received two prestigious awards from the APA. One is the reliability award, which we, they, as I stated, they analyze the reliability data, outage data. And they're focusing on the on the indices and they're telling us how well we did. And the result was that our reliability is one of the best in the new England and we are very proud of that. The other award that we received was the RP three, or which stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. And basically, they evaluated the policies, operational procedures, business model, planning, organizational management. They did all of that against best business practices nationwide. As you know, that, you know, organizations thrive to optimize performance and increase the productivities and efficiencies by following the best business practices and also following the top performing industries as a role model. And that's been our goal at RMLD to make sure that, you know, we are, we are at the top performing utilities. So the next slide, please. These are basically the certificates for their reliability, the first award that we got. This is the fourth year in a row that we get the certificate of excellence in reliability and we are very proud of that. Next slide, please. Okay, this award that the new award that is actually, this is the second RP three award in the history of Okay, this award that the new award that is actually, this is the second RP three award in the history of R M L D. The first award was in 2006 and the second one now it's in 2020. So this award is good for three years for from May 2021 through May 2024. The next slide, please. So the RP three designation, which by the way, there are three levels of award. The lowest is gold. Then the one after that upper would be the platinum and the one above that is diamond. So diamond is the highest designation. We got the platinum. A P P A designation, basically the key disciplines, disciplines in the areas that you know that that we were evaluated, where reliability, safety, workforce development, and also the system improvements. So there's lots of thoughts, lots of the documentations that, you know, we had to provide for that this process is started from May of last year and ended by December 30th. And we sent thousands of documentations because they want to make sure what you're preaching, you're practicing. So we had to prove to them for everything, cybersecurity, physical security, their succession planning, their financials, their system reliability planning, our safety practices, everything, all three sixty degrees. Whatever that you know, you you would consider a very important area that a utility, a top performing utility was focusing on, they they evaluated us. And over here, I would like to thank the other managers, you know, the Wendy Markowitz, Greg Phipps and Chuck and Underhill, as well as, you know, Colleen, our manager, for their leadership contributions. Because this is all all evaluation of the organization. And this is really a big deal for every organization and they they they're looking forward to participate, not only just to be get the awards, just to see that, you know, where we are with respect to other utilities. So we can, you know, make sure that we are on the right track and the train is heading north. What it what it's not this award, it's not telling you, basically, it's not telling you that the train has reached is this the destination. What it means that if you stop spending money on the reliability and also on the maintenance, very easily the train could be heading back south. So we have right plans, right operational procedures, and we are right on the right track. I also would like to extend the congratulations to the board, both cap members and also the board, Board of Commissioners, R M L D Board of Commissioners for the cooperation, collaborations and the leadership that led us to receive these, you know, high standard achievement award. Next slide, please. So basically, there are 270 utilities throughout the United States, out of the 2000 that they have this RP three designation. This year from New England area, actually from from the entire country and from the New England area, seven utilities participated. Nationwide, 108 utilities, they participate, they actually got to receive their award, more more participations they had. But they go through the filtering process and only 108 out of those, which I believe about 500 or 600 utilities that have participated. Only 108, they they qualify for the award. And about forty seven, they received the diamond, forty five, they received platinum, and sixteen, they received gold. So and we are proud that, you know, we achieved, we 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 got this achievement in New England. And that's a good news for the people to know that, you know, well, their their money is going for a good cause and, you know, we are doing what we're supposed to do as their representative in order to make sure that, you know, we have right programs in place and money is spent right, you know, right where it should be. Next, next one, please. So the RP three application, these are the areas that, you know, they they basically evaluated us in the demographic, the employee demographics, the reliability, you know, they like what I said, physical security and cybersecurity, nerd requirements, the indices, the safety, workforce, the development, the system improvements, the study that we did back in 2016 with the twenty year reliability plan. And, you know, we sent all of those documents and, you know, ton of ton of support from everybody across the board in 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 our organization. And they evaluated and then finally they got back to us in actually March, let us know, gave us a good news that we got this platinum award. Next slide, please. So the press release, you could see on on that, the the website and the link to that, it's in the bottom of the screen. You can see the press press release for the RP three. And also, if you'd like to see the RP three and an announcement from the A P P A, the link is above that. So you can, you know, click on that and they give you the name of the utilities that they received, these achievement awards. And to the right, you could see the plaque that we've received from A P P A and this plaque is going to be installed in the lobby of the R M L D. So again, thank you so much for everyone, for everyone's contribution, contribution of the I R D, H R, Janet Walsh, Wendy and Colleen and everybody. And specifically, also I'd like to thank Kathleen for taking the ownership of this process and actually collecting documentations and doing the hard work to submit it to the A P P A for consideration of these highest high achievement. Thank you so much again. I appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, John.
If I may, I would just like to say, congratulations, Hameed. That's an awesome accomplishment. And it reminds me of the other sort of quality areas such as the the Deming Prize, you know, for quality and the Malcolm Baldridge Quality Awards. Very, you know, excellent programs to focus on how do you improve your processes across a broad area? And the thing that's surprising to me is that we, how do we get to the diamond level? I don't understand. We're at the platinum, which is fabulous, but getting to the diamond is must take something extra special.
But trust me, then that's our goal for the next time. And you're working hard. That's why we wanted to see where we are and how could we raise the bar? And that's what our goal is for the next time. So we, that's, that's where we're heading to. And thank you so much again for your cooperation and collaboration with us and guiding us toward, you know, the, to be the outperformer. So thank you all. Thank you, Bob.
Oh, you're welcome. You know, just, just a quick comment to to live in a world of of worst performing feeders and fines. I applaud the performance here. I know exactly how hard it is to get to where you are. So kudos, kudos. All right, if no more, any other questions, comments? Yes, Marlena?
If if not, if nothing else, I know that R M L D is so reliable and that's probably what everyone says about it, that I don't know anything about it, but it's reliable and it never goes out. And I think eleven years, mine's gone out once for thirty minutes and I really didn't even notice. But I was just curious about the overall application for the state that twenty-two or so municipal light plants either never apply or I don't understand why they are participating.
But this is, this is a voluntarily voluntary process. They don't have to. Some utilities, they don't participate because they don't have the policies and procedures, you know, organized and the plans. Like, one of the toughest criterias in order to get the award is the twenty year plan, plan. We have, we got the plans for the smart grid, twenty year plans for plans for reliability. And we got exactly all the everything, you're right, it's like a big puzzle that we put these pieces together every year. So we have for the next twenty years, advanced planning and also for a smart grid automation, optimizing processes, procedures, safety, all of those. We have that and you have to demonstrate that. So the the board of A P P A, and they, you know, they they could consider you for such high achievement award. So if you don't have one of those or two of those, you're not going to get the basically the qualify qualifying grade in order to be considered for the award. So that's the reason for it.
Thank you.
Your work.
Share the congratulations and congratulations, everybody at R M L D on this this achievement. Is it, I'm wondering, is there anything different about now versus 2006? Like, what? What's different? Is there something different about what they did in 2006 versus now or what what happens in the interim? That's the only part I'm curious about.
I haven't gone to that that extent. I'm sure, you know, that's what we are going to review to see what was the last time. But I know one of the factors, but lack of reliability planning. We didn't have, when I got here back in 2015 or 14 with Colleen, that's what we realized that there is no long term plan and lots of maintenance that need that were overdue. So we needed to come up with a plan to keep the system reliable and, you know, moving forward. That was one of the factors, but and plus the requirements back then were not as stringent as they are today. Like, you know, nerd security, cybersecurity, physical security and all of that. It was really tough. Kathleen could tell you how many times you went back and forth, back and forth, saying that, okay, yeah, you meet this qualification, you have it, but how about doing this? How about the policy that enforces it? How do you enforce those policies? And we had to send pages of, you know, documentation to tell them that basically what we preaching, we are exercising and we are doing. So this time was really hard. It was, you know, I couldn't believe, even up until the last minute, we were sending documentation proving to them that we are doing what we preaching.
Well, congratulations again. And just to clarify, you know, I sent around the spreadsheet because I was just curious about the state and I I'd sent it without comment, not because there was no, you know, I just wanted to send the data and not the comments and everything for the meeting. Because I think it's important to see where we stand statewide. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, if no more comments. Wendy, you like to go?
Good evening and welcome, Commissioner Bead. Kathleen, are you sharing online? Okay, so I thought I'd first start with some highlights. So last week, we had the the next slide there, Kathleen. Thanks. Right there. Thank you. Last week, we completed the financial audit and as usual, Melanson came in and did an excellent job. Our team pulled it together and we pulled it off in four days. And right now they're preparing the draft audited financials. We are very hopeful that the financials will be ready for a meeting with the Audit Committee and presented to the Audit Committee in May and then subsequently presented to the C A B and the Board of Commissioners. So I'll have to work with Kathleen and Colleen to try to get the Audit Committee scheduled. So this week, sales tax prepayment requirement was changed by the state of Massachusetts. So typically twenty days after the end of the month, you have to get your sales tax payment in. And then Massachusetts decided that they wanted to have a prepayment. So you have to pay on the twenty fifth day in the current month for what you're expecting to to be liable for for the sales tax. So when you're looking at the accounts payable, you're going to see sales tax payment for this week, which was for March. And next week, you're going to see sales tax payment for April. So in 2021, we're going to end up having thirteen payments. The Department of Public Utilities Return is next on the high priority list here. So, you know, the accounting team with the I R D and Engineering and Operations will pull that all together and submit it. And we're going to need the Board of Commissioners signatures per usual. The town of Reading payment is set to go six thirty twenty twenty one for 1.2 million dollars and estimated right now two percent net plant payments, also for six thirty twenty twenty one at eight hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars for all four towns. Next slide, Kathleen. Thank you. Every once in a while, I like to give you a nice picture of the cash. You know, accountants love pie charts and they're very attractive to look at. But really, it does tell, it tells you everything you need to know about our cash situation, fifty seven point seven million dollars, of which twenty four point seven million dollars in the operating fund. So you can quickly identify which funds are allocating, well restricted for each topic, you know, construction, depreciation, rate stabilization and so forth. And you can identify that easily here. We are striving for three times operating expenses in the operating fund last year with almost two million dollars under budget. You're going to see that the cash is a little higher because of the timing. And of course, last year, we were a little bit over on the kilowatt hour sales as well. So right now, we're we're handling a timing issue with cash, but it's all going to shake out, I'm certain of it. Next slide, Kathleen. Thank you. Okay, so I think it's really important to make everybody aware of the accounts payable process. So the first thing to say is that the R M L D does not have any control whatsoever of cash. The town of Reading writes all of our checks. Everything goes through the town of Reading for final review and scrutiny. So this flow chart is nice to look at as far as, you know, if you wanted to really get into the detail on your own time. But in essence, what happens is in last year with the electronic, everything had to change really quickly. So in essence, what happens is the R M L D receives invoices via email. Some of them still coming in through the mail. We're trying to prevent that, but it's still happening. And then the the green square in the middle is the R M L D accounting team. So we basically manage this process. It's basically an ongoing project daily and weekly in order for this to take place. So everything comes back through the accounting team to push out. So we receive the invoices and we push them out to the managers within the divisions, you know, for approval of goods and services. They come back to us. We make sure that the proper signature is on it. We make sure that it matches to a purchase order if it's if it's relative. And then we make sure that the general ledger account is properly properly identified. So then after that, we send it off to the purchasing manager. Now, that in itself has a whole nother process of signatures and approvals through the requisition process and the purchase order process with the contracts for separate for procurement. The purchasing, the purchasing manager reviews all of the purchases. Then she sends them back to us. The accounting team prepares the batches and gets it ready. Meanwhile, you have to understand, even sending it to the managers, the purchasing manager, there's a lot of, you know, stop and go. So we're continuously, you know, troubleshooting. We're continuously in contact with the vendor. We're continuously, you know, looking at scrutinizing the contract against the invoice. And then so what happens is then the accounting team pulls all together, everything that's ready to be processed for for an actual check. Puts the batches in, sends the batches off to the general manager for her final approval. General manager, once again, stop and go, asking questions, making sure. Once she's happy that everything is is in the proper order, sends it back to the accounting team. Accounting team combines all the invoices, packages it nicely together, gets ready for the check file for the town of Reading. Prepares the warrant, then the general manager signs the warrant, they processed invoices along with the warrant, go to the Board of Commissioners for signature. At that point, they also have the opportunity to ask questions. They're only pulling invoices if they think it's fraudulent or illegal. So at this point, we can, you can ask questions and we can answer your questions. That's not a problem. And then af- after the approval of the warrant, then the town of Reading cuts the check. Before they cut the check, definitely getting phone calls over here at R M L D, again, scrutinizing, checking invoices, making sure, lots of checks and balances. We like it that way. This is how we always check ourselves. And then the town of Reading cuts a check ten days after the Friday end date, which is the warrant date. So that's basically the whole process. It is it is quite complex and I think it's very important for everybody to be aware of how this works. Every day, there's a deadline in order to move to the next day, just so you understand that. And I think that concludes that piece of it. I didn't actually have anything to say specifically about the financials. You know, it's February, they're pretty flat. We're a little bit under budget right now, but there's nothing really significant to report.
Thank you, Wendy. I guess the first thing I would say, I see that process. Would you have any process improvements that you would suggest to streamline that a little bit? To improve it, not not right now, I won't put you on the plate. But is there, is there anything that you would like to to streamline that process or suggest or, you know, anybody would like to suggest?
Well, I can first say that in 2020 alone. Well, I can first say that in two thousand and twenty alone, the process went from paper to electronic. That in itself was 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 huge. Quite honestly, and it took everybody's cooperation and help to make that happen. So we are continuously looking to streamline the process to make it more simplistic, which it's it's never going to be simple. But, you know, we work with our vendors to avoid, you know, the stop and go. We really do. So we are getting better at making sure that the contracts are, that the vendors understand what the contracts say before they go ahead and send us the invoices.
Yeah, and the process, the process works a lot better now. It used to be three commissioners had to sign the warrant in the past.
That's right.
Put my head in the door and just close it. That's good. But thank you. Is there any comment? Okay, thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda would be the R M L D procurement request.
Okay, you want the motion?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Move that I F I F P two thousand and twenty one dash thirteen for voltage and current transformers be awarded to Gray Bar Electric Company, Inc. For a hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and Wesco Distribution, Inc. For twenty eight thousand two hundred and twenty four dollars pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter one sixty four, Sections fifty six D on the recommendation, General Manager.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
No, you have, I think Hamid's speaking, but he's muted.
Hamid is muted.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yes. As you recall, last year, we tested all the primary metering structures. They've got about sixty eight, seventy of them throughout the system for for the integrity and accuracy of the metering. And we realized that, you know, well, lots of these equipments are getting actually outdated. They need to be upgraded. So these are including the P T potential transformers and C T current transformers, which basically they step down the voltage from hundred, from thirteen thousand eight hundred to one twenty volts and the current from thousands of amps to five amps. So it could be measured in the electronics and control. So we ordered the the parts for that. And we sent their bid to fourteen distributors and vendors. Only four responded. And among the four, the lowest responsible responsive bidders were Gray Bar for hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred and seventy and Wesco for twenty eight thousand two hundred and twenty four dollars. So the total award is four hundred fifty three thousand one hundred ninety four dollars.
Bob, I think it'd be appropriate that maybe for Marlene is why this actually gets in front of the commission to vote. Maybe Colleen can maybe give a quick, brief reason why this gets in front of the commission.
Colleen, you're on mute.
Yep. Sorry. We present all of the the bids under Chapter thirty in the, for certain values that exceed fifty thousand in accordance with Policy Nine to the board for approval. So you're going to see all the bids that come through that exceed those limitations. We will also comment whether or not there's any deviation from either expense budget or capital improvement plan that the board has approved if we're exceeding it. If it's a small amount, but it's been approved in the budget, then when we give the budget update, we'll talk about the previous year and why if we went over or not. That's kind of how we how we do it. But you'll you'll probably see bids like Hamid is presenting every every month. But we, but when we, when we meet with you, because I know everyone in staff is is looking forward to spending some time with you, Marlena, we can go over each one of these details, because I know it's it's kind of a lot all at once. But we'll we'll spend time with you and and bring you up to speed.
Thank you.
I I know one of the tough ones is the first time you sign off as a commissioner on the warrants, you mess it up and they have to keep, you have to do it twice and then a third time. And then someone tells you how exactly to do it, that's much, much easier for the next time. But it, so it's a three, three taps, three rights, spin around four times and then push the button and you're all done.
Chair, can I add to that? Marlene is actually on the main rotation. I don't know if we want to change that or?
I would. So that would, that would be tough.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Thank you, Wendy.
Sure.
All right. Okay.
You need a roll call vote now.
Maybe if we need a roll call vote.
It's just Empac I.
It's Pacino I.
Mr. Calderai.
Marlena, I.
All right. Okay. Next item. All righty. Item thirteen, the twenty twenty General Managers Goals Discussion. All right. I believe I don't have, I have to pull up an email. I know, Colleen, would you like to? Start that based on the email that you had provided?
Do you want me to call up the two thousand and twenty goals so we can just review what was last year? Or the new quarterly check-in process?
Can we do both?
Okay. I'm just hoping that this will open or I might have to go back. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So in two thousand and twenty, in in two thousand and twenty, and I can open the the next presentation that Commissioner O'Rourke and Commissioner Hennessy did. They're both H R executives. And we changed it from basically a point system that we do once a year to more of a quarterly check-in that is supposed to be, you know, a healthier environment with with, you know, encouragement and any type of reprioritization discussion process. And we've also adopted that on the inside as well with our senior managers going forward. But these are a list of the goals that I reported on for two thousand and twenty. And we did both the General Manager and we did some Board Commissioner goals as well. I won't re-report on them, but I did put in Marlena's packet that I sent to her, my submittal on this that I gave to the board. Hold on, sorry. Let's share this. Not as good as Kathleen on in in making this quick. See this, this is opening, hold on. Jeez, Kathleen, you're really good at this. So I I won't go through this, but I can send this back out to Marlena. This is what Commissioner Talbot and and Hennessy did on the quarterly check-ins. And how the new H R community, you know, works with their employees to, for for more of a positive outcome of performance. So this is the new procedure that we went to. I made a suggestion for goals for for this year that we're already in, we're we're already in April. And we had last year, the Wilmington substation, which we'll talk a little bit in in executive session, implementing all the NERC cyber and physical security. We just went through a big, a big change here in that and and lots of requirements that we have to implement. And so that's, that's very big on ensuring that the vulnerability was in the entire I T infrastructure, which includes not only our I T, I T business systems, as you think of them, but our entire electric system. Because we do have a smart grid system that we're implementing under Hamid's twenty year roadmap that makes, you know, that reduces truck rolls, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions and it improves the efficiency of our response time. So there's lots of I T that goes across the entire utility system and we have lots to do. So I thought that was a very big priority. The class, the cost of service study and rate study is huge. We do that every three years. This has been very complicated this year because with all the changes of Policy Thirty on the new climate bill and all of those impacts. So we do the class to cost of service, you know, on a regular basis. But then when you, when you factor in all those changes and then, you know, some new ideas that we're going to look at as well, that would have to be blended in that for for the opt-out type of programs. We're looking forward to presenting that in in everything that will come through on that. The energy conservation charge, all of those things that come out of the climate bill all have to be factored in now within each of the rates. And that would be residential, commercial, municipal and large industrial. Then, of course, you have time of use and, you know, well, all the rates are on the site, you can take a look at them. But achieving the A P P R P three award, you know, I can take, take credit for the fact that we're already in it. But I guess what I'm trying to say is we want to go to the next step. We want to go to to diamond. We have, you know, we got ninety percent score, which is fantastic. But I think we're we're almost there. I think we're heading in the right direction, our process improvements. Everything is getting better as we laid out with our reorganizational study and all the changes that we've made back five or six years ago. And where we are on that, I think if we keep going, that's a huge accomplishment to continue that. You know, there's a lot changing out there with workforce management, you know. There's new laws, you know, we have vacancies here. The whole change process of succession planning going forward, you know. There's lots of people, they take jobs and it's like, well, you know, maybe I'll give you five years. You know, that's quite different from the electric utility industry where people maybe like me would stick around for thirty years, you know. There's changeover, there's a lot more that goes into the entire process of making sure that we have quality skill sets working here. These are very unique positions. They're not just electrical engineers. They come in, they go through another seven years of career development to learn distribution and transmission engineering. Okay, same for power supply, very unique, very unique skill sets. So we want to be able to go forward with that. The Renewable Choice Program, we talked about that earlier with Marlene's input, Marlene's input and and Greg's presentation. I'd like to be able to get that done. If that dovetails into one of my suggested board goals, which would be, let's look at that mission statement. I actually told Grace earlier in the cab meeting that the reason why the Policy Thirty says that it's for the lowest price is not to say that it it's not controversial to people wanting to spend more. It's in that policy because you all told me, make this happen, this new climate bill, and don't make the price go up. That's what you gave me as a goal. This is why we go out of our way and power supply to find unit contracts and things that have lower risk management and the price fits into our portfolio. That might not be something that I can do as good of a job going forward with the new climate bill. But we're still working to that. So I actually mentioned that in the cab, that that is why it's in there. But if we change a little bit of the mission statement, that will factor in as well. And then, you know, my favorite is the three union contract negotiations start this year. That's every three years. So we have three unions and that's all going to start probably at the end of August and September. And and we actually enjoy it. I mean, there's a, there's a lot that goes on, there's a lot that's got to go back and forth. But that's when they start more towards the end of the year. So that goal would be more that that gets kicked off and and we make some headway before before the end. So that's what I'm suggesting, wasn't sure what you guys had in mind. For the for the board goals, I was looking at changing the mission statement, as I mentioned, because that is our R M L D operational compass that we have right now. Work to provide myself, staff, proper time for quality generation of analysis and presentation. And what I mean by that is, we worked really hard to give the presentation on all this change on Policy Thirty over the last few months. But even you listen to Hamid, Wendy, we have a huge business that we run and the electric system is huge. And I know focusing on power supply is very important. But we do have one of the largest electric municipal systems in the state. So what I want to do is just try to slow it down just a little bit. And, you know, when when the public's asking for analysis or the board is asking for analysis, I know we've been going really fast. I want to make sure the quality is not compromised and to just give us a little bit of time and maybe, hey, can we make the presentation next month at the next board meeting? Because we do have skill sets that work here and we are able to offset hiring a lot of consultants to do our work for us. But if we hired a consultant, we might give them three, four, six months to do something, which we just magically make appear in a month, but it really does put a lot of pressure on staff. So I'm just asking for a little compassion there. And then for the board to help maintain a healthy environment on these, on collaborative solutions. Because we want to be successful. But you do have to remember, aside from having accounting here, thank you, Wendy, we are an engineering-based company that works on think tanks. We think, and myself, we want to take Marlena's idea and John's idea and Phil's idea, and we want to make it a better idea. That's how engineers think. And so we just want to have that type of environment and allow all of our board to really understand. The, these are engineers, we're all, most of us are engineers here, except for Wendy. But so that's, that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Wendy, I believe that is the ultimate compliment you could ever get from this group. So the way I would take it.
I, I, Bob, I'm actually, we go back and forth and she says, this is how accountants think. And I say, this is how engineers think, you want to do that all day.
Exactly. Good, good.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please, Joe.
First, I'd like to say, Colleen, I think that's a, that's a great list of things to be focused on. And of course, we review this on a quarterly basis. So there's always room for change, additions, et cetera. I'd like to add one more to the board's responsibility, the Board of Commissioners. And that's to basically walk through Policy Number Nineteen as a board and make sure that we're meeting the requirements of Policy Number Nineteen. Because we've gotten sort of caught up, we've gotten feedback from the public that we're not doing certain things correctly, mostly because we've been so wrapped around the axle of payment to the town of Reading for two years or whatever, that's consumed so much of our time and effort. So I'd like to go back or suggest to the board that we go back to look over with a fine tooth comb Policy Number Nineteen and make sure that we're following what has been prescribed in it. Or since it was written in the prehistoric era, that we make some changes to it that reflect the modern era. No, no disrespect, Phil. It's just, it's some of the thing, you've got to change some things when, when things could move on, that's all. So just my input in terms of what I think the board ought to be doing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I I agree with what John just said. I think that's a great idea, having been one who harped on a couple of things in there. I I can't disagree with what he just said. And also, I also agree with Colleen's sort of larger point about, give us some time. And I'm looking at, you know, it's quarter of ten and we're looking at these goals for the kind of the first time. And maybe, maybe, you know, okay, this is great for now, but can we have some more time and space to think about what what the goal list might be? Rather than saying, okay, this is it for the year, or maybe it's just it for the quarter. But in that same spirit, give us as a board a chance to, you know, kind of think about this list, think about what we might want to add, whether it's what John said or other things. You know, I might think about things that are more quantitative based, about how can we reduce expenses? Or how can we measure the reduction of the peak, the annual peak, things like that, that are doable to incentivize those things that are that are good for the system, good for the economics, good for the environment, you know, how do we cut the peak? How do we increase adoption of time of use and things like that? I just don't have well, well baked ideas to offer right now. Just the request is for for time, Mr. Chair, to maybe, maybe we need a committee, maybe we need to do this at a separate meeting and and think about it.
I I think, I think you nailed it. I think we set these for the quarter and revisit it. That's probably the best thing. One of the things I was going to suggest, I mean, we just did a customer survey. I I don't know if Reading Lights ever done an employee survey, you know, sometimes you you do something like that. It 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 might be something to think about, not tonight, but maybe in the next quarter or or at some point, develop a structure or, you know, put that into the, into the mill as a, as a thought process.
Good idea.
How about? How about we suggest the motion to accept these for a quarter? If that, if that's possible, Phil? If that, if that's possible, Phil?
Okay, I'm sorry. These were just suggestions for a discussion tonight. There, this was not, there's no motion for a vote or anything, so. No, I, I would never ask the board to give me more time for presentations and then ask for a vote on this. So this was just for discussion, just to put something out there.
One quick.
Yeah, just one thing to kind of tack on to John's discussion about nineteen. I'm seeing that it's, what, quarter of ten at night? Now, I'm a night fighter, so this, this is fine with me. I don't go to bed before two o'clock in the morning. But, you know, we need to set a policy in nineteen when, how we're going to deal with these, with these goals. I think that's something we need to add as part of the nineteen to look into that, how we set these goals and when we discuss them. In terms of that, yeah. So we got more time than just fifteen, twenty minutes to discuss it. I think we need more time than just, we need more time than just ten minutes.
Right.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion?
No, that, that's, that made a lot of sense. Maybe we just need a special meeting or a committee meeting or something.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We went over number fourteen already?
Yeah.
All right, so now the item fifteen. Accounts payable payroll and cab meeting coverage. Cab meeting coverage, Phil, you were up. You were, you did the last one, but you're up again.
I'll do another one. You know, actually going with, in the Zoom meetings, I've been attending them all. It's so much easier now to do it this way, through Zoom. You know? I recommend, you know, you get a preview of what's coming up the, after the, you know, later on. On a daily basis, so you can have better questions. What can I say?
Okay. So accounts payable. Wendy? I'll do. Okay.
May.
All right. I'll do it for me. I'll, 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 I'll save you, Marlena, for the first month. That way, it'll get you, it'll, you'll get your feet wet a little bit, and then you'll at least get an understanding how they, how they do it.
Great.
And then the next one would be June, June payroll. Dave was on to June payroll.
Okay.
You know what?
Sorry, who's in the rotation for that, or are we replacing Dave Hennessy?
We're replacing Dave Hennessy.
Oh, I, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. And then he doesn't come up again until, for the board coverage in September.
Okay. All right, and then the next meeting is Thursday, May twenty-seventh, if everyone can make that.
Yep, no problem.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, just, Marlena, if, if you have questions on the warrant, in the past, I've always kind of sat down with everybody and kind of gone over with them. So if you, you know, need any help or anything like that, I've always kind of gone with that and kind of, in the past, some of the new members giving them kind of feel the first time they sign. So I'm willing to help you out of that if you want, okay?
I'd appreciate that a lot, Phil. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can, can you repeat the next meeting? I'm not going to be here on the twenty-seventh. I think we have a couple of managers that are out. That's Memorial Day weekend, so I'm not, that week, so. We can put the goals off till June if you want, but.
Sure.
I I just want to make sure that we, it'll definitely make the presentation shorter. You'll just have Hamid. No, I'm kidding.
Do, do you want to? So, so do we want to move it to the twentieth, or do you want to keep it the twenty-seventh minus Colleen?
Wendy's not going to be here.
Well, Wendy either. Why don't we, the date? How's the, either the fifth or the third? How's that work?
Or Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Well, I think you're out the whole week, right, Colleen and Wendy?
Wednesday and Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, so.
We could do, June, June third is fine with me.
Yeah, June third's fine with me.
Marlena? Sure, Wendy, go ahead.
So you want to push, so just so you know, we're, we're planning the audit presentation. So you want to push the audit presentation to June?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear. Thank you.
Wendy, you'll have to coordinate with the town, because it's the town audit committee's got to meet too.
Yes, I will work with Kathleen and Colleen to get all those contacts. Thank you.
I, I think we also have a audit subcommittee of the, of the commission. So I know I've always been kind of been on that, but I, I think so many, I need a second person on that. We got a volunteer? Of anybody? Any other commissioners?
That might be a good one for Marlena if she's interested in it. Really get kind of a handle in terms of the audit, which is, I, I find very interesting. If not, I'm happy to, to, to play a role.
Yeah.
What other subcommittees are there?
Not very many.
One. This is the only one.
That's the only one, I think.
Marlena, we, we had a lot of subcommittees, but we eliminated many of them because it was felt that the board should, all the board should be involved in many of the decisions.
Good.
John, it's all yours.
Okay.
It's all mine, you say?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So Phil, just let me know when.
Yeah, when, when do you be in charge? When do you set it all?
Great.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on to item sixteen, the move to executive session.
Item, Mr. Chair. I came across that the Boston Business Journal is going to have on May the twentieth, they're going to have a presentation on electrification. And one of the speakers is going to be the Technical Director of Automotive Business Units of Analog Devices. It's at noon time, from noon to, to one o'clock. And I believe you got to sign up through the Boston Business Journal, so I've, I've signed up to, I believe it's a Zoom meeting. But it is an analytical, and I thought the fellow from Analog Devices kind of caught my eye since that is in our district. So, okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Phil, can, may I speak, Chair?
Yes.
Phil, can you send us that link and take a picture of it with your phone or send it over?
Send it, I'll email it over to you, Colleen.
Thank you so much, and I'll distribute it in here. Thanks.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Okay, so again, move to, Phil, if you could.
Very good.
Item sixteen.
Move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss competibly sensitive issues regarding options for power supply, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing done?
Just step back, I.
Mr. Spassino, I.
Marlena Peta, I.
Mr. Caldera. All right. See you in a few minutes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night, thank you.
Bye, Wendy.
Bye, George.